Meeting norms: Maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs in what is best for students. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind, while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you would like. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. There was action taken in closed session pursuant to Education Code Section 45304. The Board voted to place employee 4811 on a compulsory unpaid leave of absent effective June 15, 2023. We will now take motions to approve the agenda or any other items on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposition. The motion passes unanimously. We will now take public comment on matters not on the agenda. If you are here in person, please stand up at the podium. If you are in our virtual audience, please raise your hand now. Seeing no public comment, we will close that session, and we will now take approval of the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull Item 7D, please.
Okay.
I would like to pull Item 7B and 7O. Oh, actually, not 7O because I dealt with that one. 7B, thank you.
7B, okay.
And, oh, hang on, which one here? One sec. And then, one just said D. 7F.
Okay.
So it's F and B for me.
So we have polled 7B, 7D, 7F. So what we're going to do is take a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of those items.
So moved.
Okay. Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So the consent calendar passes with the exception of Items 7B, 7D, and 7F. So let's go to 7B first. Trustee Rosenbaum?
7D.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, 7D. Yeah?
Okay.
So we'll start with B. Great. I just got confused.
Over there.
Thank you. So 7B is a certificated personnel assignment order and classified personnel assignment order. I would like to table just a small section of that. So we can... So I'm going back to the page. I would like to table the certificated hire position, which is the AMS Assistant Principal position, until the next meeting, and we can go ahead and approve the other hires in that category.
Okay, so we will now take a motion to approve 7B with the exception of tabling the Assistant Principal for the middle school.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 7B is now approved on the consent calendar, and now 7D.
Okay, 7D is a student placement agreement with the University of California, Berkeley. Although I really believe in placing students from universities for... But I just want to express my concern with doing any business right now with the University of California, Berkeley, until they start holding up their own end of the bargain. So I will vote no on that.
Maybe we could just get a little... I hear that. Maybe we could just get a little bit more information. This is the Berkeley Teacher Education Program. Does anyone have... Like, what is this serving and...
My wife uses the work for that program, so I know the program really well.
Okay, so it's...
So, as it reads, it's a student placement agreement so that students who are in their teacher credentialing program can work with our district to complete some of their student teaching hours. Is there a concern about that particular program not doing something?
No, I'm concerned about the University of California not living up to their part of our arrangements to help support the Albany Unified School District, and I will vote no on any program through the University of California until that's worked out, and I know our superintendent's working on that. Correct?
That is correct, and there's a lot of moving parts, but this is, I think, trustee Ron Rosenbaum official protest. Is that correct? Okay.
I'm just making a statement.
Duly noted in a minute. Yes, sir.
So can we have a roll call on that?
Okay, so, yes, if anyone would like to make a motion to... Around Item 7D, now is the time.
I move that we approve Item 7D.
I'll second.
We're going to roll call this vote.
Trustee Rosenbaum?
No.
Trustee Hopwood?
Yes.
Vice President Boyd?
Yes.
President Davidson?
Yes.
And it's a great program, and I hope that we find people who will come and work with our district.
And I think we're all in agreement with you about the university. I just would like us to keep high-quality people coming into Albany, so we'll...
Make statements, you know, and put them on the record.
Keep doing it. It's great. Okay, so we are now going to move on to Item 7F.
Thanks. I pulled this last meeting as well and have had more information, but I just would really like a bit more discussion about this rate adjustment. I've been... I've had some back-and-forth emails, thanks to the superintendent. He's answered some questions. I had hoped to get a bit more background information. I appreciate the efforts of directors to set the flat 11% rate increase across the board, regardless of how many hours children enrolled in before and after school care. But I think what troubles me, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, was the hike last time, I guess, and I'm not sure what the timeframe was between... Was it over years or, you know, one year before and pre-freeze, basically, because we talked about how we froze the rates for kindergarteners? I'll just use one example, which is the three to four hours per week. We're proposing raising that monthly fee to $775 from $698, which is 11%. Absolutely, that's a... Seems a fair increase. Prior to that, the rate was $495, which was an increase of 41%, which means that children in three to four hours per week, and certainly not only those children at, you know, that many hours, but this is just the most sort of extreme example, so those parents or families have had an increase of 56.6%. So I'm curious, 11%? Fine. I'm looking back a bit further to try and figure out how we got to a point where 41% was deemed an acceptable rate increase. So the rate increases have been zero for one to two hours, this is two iterations ago, 25% for two to three, 41, as I said, for three to four, 29 for 45, and 9.5 for five to seven. And now we're obviously 11% flat rate. That seems sensible. But the problem is when you've got 11% on top of an extreme rate increase, which was the previous one, I mean, I don't know how these families with kids in a three to four-hour program, three to four hours per day program, yeah, suddenly to be faced with what amounts to a 56.6% increase in a handful of years seems extreme. So I just really would like to know a little bit more about how that happened.
Can I just ask you a question, please? When was the last increase before this one? Like, I know you said a handful of years.
I did actually send a... There's one thing that wasn't addressed in my email in the response. I did ask the superintendent.
Thank you for that. A couple things. As you know, during the height of the pandemic, we kind of froze everything, and we were of the lowest among the areas under charging folks for a program that had a waiting list. And so that's part of it. The other part is that we have a triage approach to this. We have our CBO, we have our HR, Chief HR, and then we have Ed Services, who grappled with how do we bring this up fairly. 41%, that's significant, but when you look at the dollars, it does it, and you look at the comparative analysis that we conducted, it seems fair and closer to the ultimate goal of having ACC become more of an independent financial institution, opposed to us having our general funds taxed. And there, we get those funds not to run the programs, so we wanted them to be independent, and we thought it would be fair because it's still below or in the area of market rate, and that was our thinking. Not all parts were ideal, but that's what we grappled with in full disclosure, and that's the rationale. I say feel free to add any more historical perspective, anyone?
So I do recall when this item was brought to the Board last school year, and there was a little bit of question about that because the adjusted rate was not necessarily consistent across. And so our goal was twofold. One, yes, for us to be more competitive at the market rate. So in looking at our neighboring programs, we did see that the three to five-hour service was charged at a higher rate in the other programs as well. So we felt as though that made us competitive enough to still keep our students with us at that rate, more of a fair rate compared to others. And the second goal we had was to decrease the hourly rate depending on the hours of service. So if you take a look at the total rate and divide it by the number of hours that a student might receive services, you see that per hour, it's a lower rate than, let's say, one hour. So if you're a one hour, it's 195 per hour, but if you look at the three, four, or five hours, the hourly rate, if you divide the total by three hours, four hours, or five hours, you're going to see that decreasing to maybe 170-something an hour, to 160-something an hour, to 150-something an hour.
So the numbers that we have on here, the new rate, is that a monthly rate, a weekly rate? Like, what are... Sorry, this was not in any of the information, so I had a really hard time comparing around.
Monthly.
So this is... Okay, so if we took... So if we take, let's say, the 775 monthly, and then all these others down here are in the three to four hours are also there monthly?
Yes.
Okay. And then we... So if we go down on an hourly basis, you're saying they're paying less per hour in that rate than in the lower hourly one?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't just have, like, a set hourly rate that families... Because that's where I feel like it would be easier for us if we just said, "Our care program is blank per hour of care. Sign up for the care you need, use your hours, and maybe we just charge based on those," and like, I don't know, I'll give myself an example. Okay, this week, oh, no, maybe there's room. We've both got meetings. Can we add a couple hours of Karen, and we'll pay that extra hourly rate? Yes. So I'm just wondering, maybe this is a good way for us to go instead of these, like, random, seemingly random feeling jumps and everything. And I know that the Board mentioned that we were concerned about that the last time we did these raises, that we just... We wanted it to be clear and transparent, something that the community could understand. So I think that would be a good direction for us to start moving, is just set that.
And I think that I appreciate the need for quality childcare. Families in the district are really keen to have this available, and also the need to be a solvent program, so that goes without saying. And I also did say in my last email to the superintendent this morning that if this is just what needed to happen to, like, bring the prices of our program in line with other, you know, East Bay programs, that's fine, but I didn't want to gloss over the fact that that is, you know, an extreme rate hike over two increases, 56.6%. So I didn't want to be pretending that hadn't happened because that's quite a shock for some families, I think, to have to...
Can you visualize a better solution than what we're seeing now?
So I think now that we have...
We have...
With the 11%? No, of course, and I think that just an 11% flat rate increase now makes sense, and now perhaps it means that we are more in line and it's more proportional, which is what my hope was, as I said in my emails to the superintendent. I just think we can't gloss over the fact that, looking back only to rate increase cycles, that we've gone up drastically in some of those categories. I do think, as I mentioned to Mr. Reed last week, it'd been... Well, not last week, last meeting, and some other people we were talking to, just, it would be nice to sit down and have some kind of a workshop to try and figure out, as President Davidson's just said, a kind of more of a thoughtful approach to how to actually manage this rather than just not random, but, you know, blanket rate hikes or just so that there's transparency and figuring out what people need and, yeah, what model would work better.
Do you feel like we can live with this for the current...
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, that's the thing. I just wanted to have some...
Just trying to decide how to vote.
Yes, no, and I just wanted some background about why, I guess, I'm not sure it's been answered still, but I think it's more Dr. Shin saying that it was to try and make it more in line with other programs, that that 41% was necessary. So if somebody charged me an extra 41 or 56%, I would not be requiring their services anymore. So it's a lot for some families, and I know it's... These people unfortunately don't have much choice because they need the childcare, and that's where I think I'm torn because, you know, it doesn't seem very fair.
No, I agree with you. I mean, I've been... We've been getting, I don't know if everyone has, but messages and emails. Parents are really, really worried still that we don't have enough space, that our numbers don't match up, and now, you know, they're seeing this, and the YMCA isn't a fully formed program for the district yet. And so it's definitely like we're in limbo in a lot of places, and I understand that we've had a waiting list and we want to be competitive, but I also... Like, I also realize that there are other districts that don't provide this within their own district, so that's maybe a conversation that we need to have, is, is this what we want to continue providing, and can we really give families the best bang for their buck doing it this way? Is there something else that we should be looking at? Or if we are doing this program, and now we're going to charge this much more, is our program that we are offering at the same level as these other programs? Because if you're telling me that what the Creative Play Center is offering and what we're offering is comparable, I would say no. Because they are offering very small group, they're providing snacks, there's like a lot more attention per kid, so it's a very different program. It's hard to compare those two. You know, and so I would really say, let's look at this more holistically, and so I like the idea of a workshop for more information, and maybe sometimes when we can go in and observe what these programs look like so that we see what we're charging everyone for.
We would love to.
I would say, I would double down on a workshop because I think that's a good place to have some good discussion and some real honest discourse about the quality of program, what we charge, and how do we make it independent and not dependent on us because it's supposed to be independent. And I think tonight, we don't have a whole lot of time for that, obviously, but a workshop is warranted. And so, Madam Chair, President Davidson, I would look into that, hopefully for the fall.
I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge that we've been complaining about and seeing the issue with the fact that ACC runs at a deficit, and so this is an attempt to do something about that. So I do just want to recognize that, not that this is necessarily the only way to do it, and I also very much support a workshop to discuss the whole concept of it, but I do just want to acknowledge that we have been asking for a way to try to right the ship, and this is an attempt to do that by the district.
Completely agree with that.
Madam Chair, the staff will jump right on schedule on workshop.
Okay, great. We'll follow up.
That could be noted in a minute, and then, so when we debrief, we can make sure we put that on the calendar.
And so now we're going to look for... Well, are there any further questions on this from the Board? Okay. And now we're going to look for a motion around Item 7F.
So I'm happy with the discussion and move to approve Item 7F.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we pass Item 7F, and thank you so much to the district for bringing that and making changes and working with our Board.
I'm sorry, can I make a comment on that item, though I know it's probably not appropriate? I just want to thank trustee Hopwood for raising that because I do think it's very valuable to have the conversation and to acknowledge and, like, take a minute to pay attention to the fact that this is an important... That the hike is a big hike, especially over those years, so I just want to say it was... I appreciate you raising it.
Ditto.
We will now move to our review and action items. So we have Item 8A, which is the provisional internship permit.
Yes, Madam Chair, President. Davidson, we have our Chief Human Resource Officer, who's going to address that momentarily.
All righty. Thank you. So as you saw in the Board backup, this is... This allows us to hire someone on a special permit. They're not fully credentialed, but they are starting a credentialing program, and they haven't met certain requirements in that program to get a full intern credential, so this is sort of like the pre-intern credential. And this person actually worked for us this last year in this position on another special credential, and before that has actually was a music aide for multiple years with the district.
Wonderful to see people growing within our district. All right. Any questions around action item 8A? Any motions?
Move we approve provisional internship permit.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have approved the provisional internship permit. We will now move on to Item 8B, which is Resolution Number 2022-23-41, Reduction of Classified Services.
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution to reduce one particular classification, which is the Student Support Coordinator. This position is grant-funded, and we've received information from the state that that grant will be reduced, which you heard about last time in the budget presentation. So that's why we're bringing this forward.
And from the looks of it, it's being reduced by a 1.0 FTE, so we're losing that position?
Yes.
Okay.
As you guys know, and some of you guys have been following the budget that we're waiting for the governor to sign, they call it a fiscal cliff. And all that money we were getting and grants and COVID funding has just dried up. And so districts all over the state are having to reduce some, some more than others, but everybody is in that reduction because the grants are gone and dried up, and that means we spent a lot of money on services and personnel. And so right now, we are fortunate that we didn't have to lay off too many personnel, but we do have to do that in order to stay fiscal.
Any Board questions around this item? Other than, let's keep thinking creatively about how to fund these without the state? Okay. Any motions around this item?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2022-23-41, Reduction of Classified Services.
Just so everyone knows, we don't have any public comment in person or online that I'm seeing, so that's why I didn't... I just moved past that. Okay.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that passes. Resolution 2022-23-41 passes unanimously. We will now move on to Item 8C, which is the approval of the LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Good evening again. The purpose of this item is to approve the 2023-24 school year Local Control Accountability Plan and the local indicators that were presented at the June 13 meeting. Upon approval tonight, we will submit that to the Elementary County Office of Education and post it on our district website for the public, and in the new school year, we are happy to implement the actions and services that are outlined in the plan.
All right. Are there any Board questions around this? Any public comment on this item? Okay, we have one virtual comment. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm... This is Ms. Patty, and this is not actually about this thing. I was having technical difficulties doing a public comment. Oh, sorry, dog. I want to just be mindful of when we're eliminating positions to look at not just the quantitative data of our students, but also the qualitative data. I think that this position that was eliminated in the previous thing is, we're going to really miss that position.
We already approved it, so we'll follow up. Our Human Resources Director has information on this and will hopefully make us all feel okay about it after this item. Okay, great. So we're going to do a motion on the LCAP, and then we're going to just circle back for a second on an update on the last one because we know there's technical difficulties everywhere. Any motions on 8C? 8C is the Local Indicators and Local Control Accountability Plan approval.
I move that we approve the 2324 Local Indicators and Local Control Accountability Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no opposition. So the LCAP has been approved. Okay. Do you like to come back up and give us a quick update?
So the position that we reduced is the Student Support Coordinator, which is separate from the Student Wellness Coordinator, which I think maybe the person was referring to. So I just wanted to make that distinction.
Maybe we could just have a quick reminder of where this position served, like, what sites and what levels, and maybe just like a quick thing about it?
At the secondary level. I'll leave it that general, if that's okay.
Yep.
What did that person do at the secondary level?
Supported students, supported the school site with sort of some mental health type and SEL-type services.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to Item 8D, which is the adoption of the 2324 budget and the resolution to confirm the district's commitment to fiscal solvency.
Okay, thank you. So the districts are required to adopt the budget prior to July 1 of each year, and at the last Board meeting, the Board was able to discuss and receive the presentation. So now, this evening, we have this item for the Board to adopt 2324, the proposed budget as presented at the last meeting, and also approve a Resolution 2022-23-28.
Okay. Any Board questions about this? Any public comment about the budget?
Just thanking Jackie for all the work she does. It's amazing. Thank you so much.
Our job would be much harder in many other districts, so we will appreciate all that you do, again. Okay. Any motions around this item?
I'll move Item... I don't know what it was, 8D, for the budget adoptive... Adoption.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so the budget passes, and we will now move on to Superintendent and Board Member Reports.
Yes, I'm happy that we made it to this point. It was a very tough and arduous year in many respects, and it was a very successful and rewarding year. It's one of my favorite parts of the year when you see all the culminating activities on display, ranging from graduations to promotional activities, to song and dance with the band and the Yoshi. Our jazz bands going out to Yoshi's last month and just performing and making a lot of noise there. It was just a very proud moment. But I do want to leave the Board with one wish that I have for each and every Board member, and that is, I wish that you have a great summer and summer break. I will not be bugging you except sending you emails every now and then. If there's a 911, I'll pick up the call, the phone, and call you, and... But that's only after I call 911. And so I'm wishing you a great summer.
Trustee Rosenbaum? No, no comment? No report? Sorry.
Looking forward to a little break.
Okay.
I will just thank Dr. Wells for calling 911 before he calls me. Happy summer, everyone.
I mean, I have the Albany emergency number on my speed dial, my favorite, so if you do call me first, I'll get into them too, but then we'll have to hang up, so please call 911 first. I just wanted to say that I've really enjoyed, I, I walked around the Marin campus the other day with my kids, because it was open for a little bit in the mornings, and it's just a really nice space, and there are some really thoughtful details that were incorporated to keep some of the old, like, original elements of the school site, and it's just really lovely, and I'm excited to have kids come back there. And every family I talk to is like, oh, we're so excited. This next year is going to be one of the first years that Albany's, like, settled again. And so I really look forward to that for all of us, a fall of no moving, no shuffling, no shifting. And I really wish you all luck this next month with the shuttling and shifting. And I appreciate all of those who are coming in and helping us with the moving and the heavy lifting, because I watch them, and they are moving and lifting heavy items, and so it's just much appreciated, and I wish everyone a very happy month off. Okay. With that, we'll take future agenda items. And one of those is an ACC workshop. So we've got that. And I think in the fall, we'll also be doing our governance handbook, like, a bigger workshop as well, when we can wrap our heads around that. Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Record breaker.